Okay, moving on to 6.3. We're going to open up a public hearing. It's our 9:15 a.m. item. This is regarding Community Development Block Grant Program, CARES Act Round 2 and 3. Presentation and consideration of resolution approving an application for CDBG CARES Act Round 2 and 3. Funding and the execution of grant agreement and any amendments for funds in the amount of $738,187 for a small business assistance loan fund program. Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Assistant County Administrative Officer Susan Parker is going to introduce this item, and then Jeff Lucas, our contractor, will report to you.
Good morning, Board. This public hearing involves your consideration of a resolution approving an application for the CDBG CARES Act Round 2 and 3 funding for business assistance loans in the amount of, as you stated, Chair, $738,187. Jeff Lucas from Community Development Services will present a brief overview of this program and a recent update of, good update, by the way, of previous CDBG business-related applications that we submitted last year. Jeff?
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Board. I just want to let you folks know that the county has been approved for the applications in the amount of $500,000 that was submitted last year to set up a business loan program to provide low-interest capital to retain jobs. They're also approved for a grant in the amount of $250,000 to provide technical assistance to our microenterprises, which is very small businesses. That's businesses with five or less employees. That's also been recently approved. It takes the state a little while to get through this process. We have also submitted more recently, through the board approval process, an application in the amount of $202,859, which is going through the approval process. We anticipate getting a letter of approval for that in a couple of weeks. That was for the CDBG CB1 fund. And today, we're requesting the board approve an application in the amount of $738,187, which is a combination of CDBG CB2 and 3 funding allocations to provide low-interest loans to local businesses, forgivable loans for job retention. I just want to make sure that the board understands that these loans are not a giveaway program. We have requirements with the CDBG program where we use the five Cs of lending. We try to be as thorough as possible with these loans. The intention is to help our businesses, but at the same time, these are public funds, and the rules are pretty extensive on how we perform the underwriting to make sure that we retain jobs and we select and provide assistance to businesses that are going to stay here in Lake County and overall help our economy. It's just important for me to communicate to you that while we want to help businesses, we need to do so in a way that's reasonable and we're following the rules on underwriting. Sorry, Susan, I had to get that in.
Did you?
If you'd like me to go through the PowerPoint, I can do that. Please. Is that acceptable at this time? Yes, please. Let's go ahead and do the PowerPoint. I think it's good for us and the public to be able to see. Okay.
Make sure he's enabled to share screen if he is not already. Can you do that? Thank you.
I'm on the PowerPoint.
Thumbs up.
I can pull it up?
Yeah.
But where is it?
It's in, I'm sorry, we didn't, we didn't have it ready. It's my fault, Susan and Carol.
Susan, can you do a share screen?
I'm on my lap. I don't, I can't.
Give me just a moment.
It's under Lake County.
Just one moment.
We'll pull it up in one second. Two, three. PowerPoint.
Okay, so now we want to go here, and I don't know how, how do we do this shared screen?
We had a little problem with my machine this morning. I apologize for the delay.
So I've got it here, Mr. Chair, and there you go. Okay?
Thank you.
Tell me when you want me to change pages, Jeff.
Okay. So the first slide is an introduction. We can skip the first slide and go to this number two, which is CDBG CARES Act Notice of Funding Availability. The CDBG CB2 and 3 funds are separate from the annual CDBG application cycle. This is new money that's been made available to us through the federal government and then through the state of California. There's $738,187 available for Lake County. We looked at various applications uses for this fund and determined that the best use would be to provide low-interest loans to businesses to help them retain jobs and weather the impacts of the CB19 that we're all going through for the past year. The application requires that we use by, is by resolution, and these new applications are online through what's called the ESIBA software program. It's a little bit different than the way we're doing it in the past. I want to make sure that we communicate to you that the programs and projects must meet CDBG purpose and mitigate impacts of the COVID-19 on our economy. The next slide, called the Three National Objectives, is, the Three National Objectives are principally benefit low-income households, housing, or persons. That's where we, and the way we do that with the business loan program is that when positions are retained or created using these loan funds, that the individuals that fill those jobs come from low to moderate household, and that way, we're making sure that folks who meet that criteria receive benefit from these public funds.
Are you guys, are you guys still there?
Yeah, we can hear you. We can see you. I get going. I had too much coffee this morning. Bruno got me going early.
I just wanted to make sure.
So then we have the other, the second item is to mitigate slums and blight. This is very difficult to use, but it is a possibility. And in Lake County, I'm hoping in the future, we can revisit that because there are areas in Lake County that we could, with some homework, utilize these funds in the future for economic development purposes and also the mitigation of blighted areas. Finally, then, HCD and CDBG allows us to use these funds to meet an urgent need. However, on paper, they say they will allow that, but it is very difficult to utilize those funds in spite of the fact that we've got fire disasters in the past. We have been able to use the funds for that on occasion, but it's tough. What HCD and CDBG want us to do is use these funds primarily to assist folks in the low to moderate household incomes level. The next slide is for eligible activities, and this is to give the board an idea of what these funds can be used for for the future. The reason why it's important is that the annual cycle notice has come out from HCD, and in the near future, about two months from now, the county will be eligible to apply for up to $1.5 million in additional CDBG funds for activities that meet the three criteria, one of the three criterias we just discussed. And those, those projects can include housing rehabilitation, housing acquisition, public improvements, public facilities, and public services. And then there's also economic development, which is the microenterprise assistance program, which we've recently been approved for, and the business assistance program, which is business loans. Finally, the final slide is slide number five on economic development, and we are recommending that the board apply for the CDBG CARES Act Fund 2 and 3 cycle at $738,187 for a small business assistance revolving loan fund. It's primarily to retain jobs, but we're hoping as we come out of this COVID situation, we'll be able to create jobs as well. So the program can be designed and has been designed to retain jobs as well as create jobs. This amount would be combined with the CDBG's business loan program that was recently approved, the amount of half a million dollars, as well as the CB1 funding in the amount of $202,859. Those programs are all designed so that we follow the underwriting criteria of CDBG programs, and there's not much variance in the application. By that, I mean, we don't have all these different programs. It'll be one program, and we'll be using CDBG funds from CB1, CB2, and 3, and then the annual cycle. So the total amount that the county would have available for programs and administration would be $1,441,046. Thank you very much for your presentation. Anything further, Ms. Hutchinson, before we bring you back to the board?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Pyska?
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Lucas. Can you tell us how many small businesses have taken advantage of the previous loan packages and how far that's been drawn down?
Well, we haven't even gotten those programs on the streets yet, Supervisor Pyska, because while we applied last year and we got approval recently, we don't have the standard agreements in place yet, and we can't really get the program operating until the state provides the county with the standard agreement, the agreement between the two entities, so that we can move forward. Believe me, we're talking to them every day, trying to expedite accessing that. So the answer is, we haven't implemented the program yet. We'd love to.
Great. So what will the terms of the loans be and what is the pathway to forgiveness?
The pathway to forgiveness for this program would be for businesses that retain jobs for a two-year period in this case. Then, at the end of that two-year period, the remaining principal can be forgiven. In some cases, some jurisdictions have used a three-month timeline for job retention, but our intent with these funds is to help businesses, but at the same time, make sure that the use of public funds goes to a good purpose, which is job retention. If that, after two years, which by then, we hope the COVID situation has been resolved, then the remaining balance can be forgiven. The terms will be variable depending on what is being used, what the funds are being used for. For example, if it's equipment, that's usually a five-year term. If you're using working capital, that could be five to seven. So there's a variation on that, but usually, it's between five and seven years. A little bit longer if we're doing improvements to property. On the rate, the rate would be from 1% to 3%. In some cases, the loan committee may decide to reduce the rate even further, and they have the discretion to do that.
So this is a revolving loan fund, and so you answered my question because the loans haven't been, begun to be activated, but this will build up over time with the interest that's creating a permanent revolving loan fund structure for our county?
That is the intention of it. Not all the loans will go for business retention. Some of them, we're hoping, will go for job creation because even though we have a number of businesses that need the funds and for retention purposes, we're also seeing businesses that are expanding. So we wanted to have the flexibility, and those are the ones, if they create a job, there will be a repayment for the entire term of the loan. That is the standard CDBG loan program, and that will help us generate a long-term revolving loan fund.
And I know you do offer technical assistance under some other programs and funding sources. And are a lot of small businesses taking advantage of that technical assistance during this time?
Yes, they are. Yes. And we work in close cooperation with the Economic Development Corporation. I think you folks know that. And so we have cross-referrals. We're also what's called an affiliate of the Northern California SBDC Finance Center, and so they can supplement some of the technical assistance activities that we do. And then we work with the Economic Development Finance Corporation out of Mendocino County to share the load relative to loans. For example, we have a loan that we're working on now that will create jobs over the next year and a half, and it's a local business. They've been here about 20 years, and we're going to do about 100 and, what we're hoping is the county can participate at $70,000. The EDC can participate at $113,000, and then the EDFC will participate at about $200,000. So we all have a piece of the total deal, and we're helping each entity kind of share the risk as well as the benefit of helping that business.
So you're in pretty close contact with a lot of our business owners. Can you just share how they're feeling, what the morale is right now during this time? And kind of, you know, they've been pretty beat up this last year, but how, you know, what's the temperature now?
You know, that's kind of all over the board. There's just, there is, I mean, we're fatigued just from, you know, trying to do what we do, but most of the businesses remain optimistic, and they're, you know, they're committed to continuing. I know some folks have failed. Some folks have moved on, literally moved from the area, but I think most of our businesses are sticking with it and continuing, and it's peculiar. Some are not doing well, and we're continuing to work with them, and they're not giving up, but others are actually doing better than they were before. So we have this mixed situation going on, but it's been tough overall.
Well, it has been a difficult year, and your office has been working tirelessly to support the businesses. So I'm really thankful for that work and thankful for this report, too. I'm looking forward to this program.
Thank you. Any other questions? Supervisor Scott?
Definitely appreciative of bringing this program to us. Just to get a better understanding of the loans, is there going to be a minimum or maximum? And then is it first come, first served?
The first question, yes, the minimum is $35,000. The maximum is set at, I think, $105,000. But the committee will have, if we see an application that's for more, like $140,000 or something, and it's gonna, it's a solid deal, and it makes sense, and it's going to create jobs or retain jobs, then we'll bring it to the committee. They have the discretion to do more. So we do have a set policy, but we have some discretion in that amount. And doing smaller loans, there are other programs available. When you get down below $35,000, given all the due diligence you need to do with this program, it doesn't make much sense to go below $35,000 because it takes a lot of time and effort to do these particular loans. And then as far as, what was your second question? I'm sorry.
Is it first come, first served, or is the committee going to be putting them in an order?
Well, I think it's going to be first come, first served, and we are going to, once we know and we get the commitment from the state in writing, and we have our standard agreement in place, we're going to work with the county and with the EDC and the SBDC, our network, and the business organizations on, obviously, the chamber, to get the word out. And I think typically, when we do that with these programs, you do get a rush, and then you, when you apply the requirements of the program, it kind of weeds out those that you can't help, and then you end up with those you can. So we don't have a, we don't have a prioritize by business type.
Thank you. That was all my questions.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. Supervisor Crandall, did you have a question?
She asked the question. I was going to ask, he answered it. Thank you.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Simon?
I just think, you know, another positive program, and we'll be happy when we get that agreement with the state, though, so we can start administering, you know, the other loans that we were talking about that need to go out. But other than that, anything that we can do to help support our local businesses as they're, you know, trying to make it through this pandemic is very important. So thank you very much for what you guys are doing, and I think this is a positive step forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor. I do have a couple of questions and comments. One of my questions is, has already taken a while in order to get the initial loans out to begin with from the previous program? What is the timeline to get this money into our businesses' hands for this specific Round 2 and 3 CDBG loan? Do you have an idea of what the timeline might be between getting applications and actually providing capital? So if we're talking about getting the standard agreements and making arrangements between the county and the state, there has been an issue and a problem, a bottleneck with that process at the state level, and many jurisdictions are having this same problem. It's been six months since the approval time to, and we still don't have an agreement for the first application for half a million dollars. The, we've been, noticed that we've been approved for the more recent CB1 application for about the $200,000. They've told us that in a month, we should have a standard agreement, but that'll be great if that happens. For this application here, I, they are saying it'll be about maybe a three-month turnaround time to the point where we're going to implement. If that's the case, that'll be great. The one thing that I'm hoping, if we have any further delays in this, that the board would consider reaching out to HCD or through staff, whatever the appropriate way is, this is kind of a little bit above my pay grade, but I think, I think letting HCD know that we need to, we have a need here and we need to move forward would be helpful. But that's, that would be, of course, the decision of, you know, county staff and the board. We've been working with the California Association for Local Economic Development as a member of that organization to work in a friendly way towards getting these documents we need to implement, but it's, there's a bottleneck there. And is, from what I understand, because you say we've been approved for these funds, they're not going to get denied to us. It's a matter of time to get those funds, correct? Correct. I'm wondering if maybe we need to bring back another agenda item to discuss if there's a possibility of the county being able to front some of this money and then getting paid back, because to me, waiting three months minimum and then maybe waiting six months or who knows how much longer for the state to get their ducks in a row, that doesn't help our businesses that might be hurting today. And so I don't know if that's a conversation that the board wants to have at a later time. Obviously, we can't have that now, but I'm just, that timeline, it's a, it's a COVID, coronavirus aid and relief fund, and it sucks to look at somebody who's in harm's way to say relief is coming, give me about three months and might be longer. So if there's any way that we can shorten that timeline, it would seem that that really truly would be a relief fund. On the other side, just to move on, I don't know how comfortable I am that this is used for job creation versus relief, since this is a relief fund. And if they're creating jobs, that means those businesses are doing well. And at the same time, I had a conversation with you earlier today where the businesses that are hurting, and I'm sorry if I'm doom and gloom, but with all the variants coming out for COVID-19 and with the expected percentage rate of people getting vaccinated, the status of what we're dealing with, with our businesses, is not necessarily going to go away anytime soon. I think outdoor dining is going to be something that's much more embraced than before for all restaurants. If you're a new restaurant, you're probably going to have to think about having an outdoor section rather than just only an indoor section, things like that. And so we want to make sure that we're helping people who have a plan on how to deal with that in the years to come, not just a plan to return back to where they started, because things may never go back to where we started. But I also feel uncomfortable with job creation because that's helping those that are doing well, and there are definitely some that are doing very well right now versus some that are hurting. So it's kind of that balance. Do we help those who are willing to change and fit within the new norms of what tomorrow may ask us of, or do we help those who are making it really well and can be that much more successful? And seeing the title of it and how it's a relief fund, I'm slightly uncomfortable with this idea of loans to create jobs, which we want to create jobs, but that might not be the right loan. That might be seen as a pretty harsh thing for somebody who's hurting right now, to see someone else who's doing well and wants to create jobs, getting those funds rather than those that are getting hurt by the status that we've been in in the last year or so, especially in the last few months where it's been a little bit harder on many. So I don't, I'm kind of conflicted on, on the usages of this, and I'd like to see if maybe it could be a little bit more narrowed down rather than so broad where it almost seems like it's just your standard small business loan versus an actual COVID relief loan. Okay. The priority, the language in the, in the narrative where we discuss the criteria is for job retention purposes, and we can strengthen that language. Our thinking during the preparation of the application was to provide us with, the county with some flexibility so that if there was a business that needed this gap financing and was unable to get it through a bank or was unable to get it at the rate and term that would allow them to move forward with the business development, that we could, we could provide some financing for that business. If, if, you know, the, you folks determine that this should just be for job retention, we can modify the application that way. I just want to make sure you folks understand that the priority is for job retention, but we've allowed, we wrote it up so that we would have a little flexibility in case there was a need for some job creation loans. So, and we can, we can modify the application. It's not been submitted, and that's what, you know, this, this interaction right now is all about. Okay. Thank you so much. And so now I'm looking at the board, and I would love for us to have a huge focus on job retention. As we know, COVID-19 has had a major impact, and I'm looking to heal that impact and not help those who have not been as impacted. And also looking for, I think it's important that, let's be real, if you are hurt and you're in an industry where others in your industry are doing well, but you're not, I think there needs to be a plan on how to be more flexible in dealing with these situations that is also submitted rather than just, again, trying to go back to your previous normal. So I think that a, some sort of business plan of how to move forward into the future to ensure success and also more focus on job retention, one or the other or none, but those are my two options that I would like to see a little bit more strengthened and highlighted and looking at the board to see how they feel about that. Supervisor Pyska?
Is the first loan package that we're, that's been approved and we're waiting, I think that's $500,000, is that, does that also have a pathway for forgiveness?
Yes.
And is that based on retention?
Job retention. With, with, the priority is job retention, but also we have language in that first one that allows for job creation, but the priority is job retention. They're all, they're all written at this stage, pretty much the same. Those two that have been submitted were prioritization for job retention with some flexibility for job creation if, if it met the criteria of the program. And the program is, is also, if a business can get a bank loan, then we don't use this program. That's one of the criteria. They have to have been turned down. So, and in some cases, it's not only access to capital, it's the cost of capital and then the collateral arrangements that prohibit a business from accessing loan funds in the conventional sense. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. The program is designed to provide first funds for job retention and secondarily, funds for job creation. This for job creation. This, this third application for funds, we can modify it to however the, you know, the board wants us to do it.
So in your conversations with the business owners, and as Supervisor Sabatier pointed out, some businesses are really, really hurting. Are there businesses that wouldn't qualify for these loan packages, in your opinion?
Are there businesses that would not?
Would not qualify? Or do we need to make a modification so that we could provide these loans to anybody that pretty much needed them?
We've made the program as flexible as we can, we believe, based on the community development block grant underwriting criteria. So I can't, I'm, we can't stretch it any further than we have. I'm not sure I'm answering your question.
You did. I think you did. Yeah.
Okay. It's, some folks will not be eligible for this, but we're hoping a majority will. And if they're not, we don't just turn them away. We work with them to help them get eligible if we can. It's a two-way street, and that's where, you know, working with the finance center and working with the county's microenterprise program, technical assistance, that's why we applied for that, to help these smaller folks get business ready. Some of them, we won't be able to help with this program.
Well, you and I have worked together on a different loan program, and I've really seen how you can support the businesses. You'll say, you know, this business isn't ready for the loan yet, but we're going to get them there. We're going to work with them for a few months. I'm bringing in all these resources, technical assistance, to get them to where they will qualify for a loan.
That's what we try to do, but I don't mean to sound negative. It's just that some, some businesses, we're just not going to be able to assist. We're going to try, we want to, but we have to follow the rules, too, you know? Public funds, I know you know this, but it's a bit of a balancing act.
Thank you, Supervisor Pyska. Supervisor Crandall, I think I saw you with your hand.
Yes. Jeff, I just had a question. When you speak of loans, are you talking about PPP and idle or just any type of bank loan?
Well, you know, we do a lot of work with the PPP and idle programs, and they have their own criteria and purposes. And so when I'm talking about loans, I'm not even, I wasn't referencing those loan programs. I was thinking in terms of the conventional lending with our banks, Umpqua, and the other banks that we work with. And when they get, they're often turned down, and then we have to work with the business. We try to help them get up to speed, provide technical assistance, help them understand. It's all, it's usually all about cash flow. It's the business plan and cash flow, and tracking and understanding your cash flow. That's really the, where a lot of our work is, helping businesses, wouldn't you say, Jeff?
Yes.
So I was thinking in terms of conventional loans.
Conventional. Okay, thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure, so that people listening would understand as well that that was what you were talking about, so.
The other thing, because the CDBG program has strict criteria. If a business has received a PPP loan, for example, and they've applied it to something, we, the county with this fund can't step in and use these funds for that same purpose. We have to make sure that we've tracked the use of funds from other sources so that this, these funds aren't utilized for the same thing. It's called a duplication of benefit. I just wrote up the stuff we have to look at for that. So we have to keep our eye out on that, too. This, this program, well, it's designed, in this case, to help businesses and retain jobs primarily. We still have to follow the program criteria.
All right. Thank you, Jeff, Chairman. You know, from my point of view, obviously, with the presentation provided, Jeff, you know, job retention and, you know, the job growth opportunities or job creation, I think should be a double part of it. Number one, we want to help those worst affected, but also the folks that have an opportunity to just continue growing or maintaining their business, you know, is very important. So I think the way it's presented and the way you presented it, I'm in favor of both those options. As you said, it would be during the interview process or the application process, it'd determine, you know, what's the best benefit. And, you know, obviously, retaining jobs, very important, but also growing jobs and job growth is very important to our industry, you know, our business industry in Lake County also. So I'm in favor of both of those, the way it's written. I think the one thing I want to focus on is obviously the master agreement or the agreement that you talked about that we haven't got from the state. And I know Chairman Sabatier talked about bringing it back, but in this conversation, I'd really like an opportunity where Jeff, maybe you could work with the chair, and we could reach out to whoever we need to do and start making those phone calls now and potentially later on, a letter from the board or something saying how important this is. Because as it said, three months, five months, six months, that's just too long. One thing I couldn't be any more proud of is the program that was ran through the CARES Act where the funds, the 1.3 million got out to the businesses, it got completed, and that made a huge impact. So I would really like to focus on getting that pressure, start making those phone calls to HCD or whoever needs to do that. And if the chair would commit to do that, I think that would be great to start that out now. And then if we need to come back with a letter or something from the board level, just to let the state know how important this is to our business industries here in Lake County, that we get these programs going and started. It's great that we approve them, but if they're not hitting the street, we're not getting the benefit of it. So that's really my focus for today's conversation. It's great. I'm all in favor of what we're doing, but we've got to get the program started.
Okay. Supervisor Scott?
I definitely agree with you, Supervisor Simon and Supervisor Sabatier. We need to get this money to our businesses, and I'm also in agreeance with Supervisor Sabatier of, can we look somewhere to be able to front this money, knowing it will be guaranteed? So I would like to see that brought back, so we can get this money to where it needs to be.
If I may offer a suggestion, I like Supervisor Simon's suggestion of at least trying to have the conversation with the state to get it, get the wheels moving a little bit faster. And then if the wheels don't move faster, then at that point, we can come back to the board, whether that's a letter or a conversation of how do we find the funds and then replenish those funds. That could be a later conversation. So I will work with Ms. Hutchinson and Mr. Lucas to see what we can do on our end to get the state moving a little faster, and then we'll see about coming back to the board if that's necessary, if the money is not coming. If that's okay with the rest of the board, that's the direction we'll take. Okay. And I know that Supervisor Simon had said that he liked the agreement as is, and I was looking for a slight change. I'm just looking for the board. Do you want to keep going with the agreement as is? Are we looking at a change? Just looking to finish up that conversation as well.
I'm okay with how it is right now. I think there's enough flexibility in the agreement, in the plan, to make it fit the needs that we need met.
Okay.
I also agree as is.
Okay, perfect. And if there's no further comment from the board, we will open it up to the public. Again, we're on item 6.5, or sorry, yeah, 6.5 for the, no, where am I? 6.3. Went a little further. We're on 6.3, talking about the CDBG CARES Act, round two and three, for business loan programs to help for those impacted by the coronavirus. Jake, if we can open up the Zoom room, please.
All right. I've sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Oh, that's my cue that we have no comment from the public. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for either further conversation or it is a resolution that would be, need to be offered.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer the resolution.
Okay. Resolution has been offered. Johanna, if you could please do a roll call.
Okay. Supervisor Simon?
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
Hi.
Supervisor Scott?
Hi.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lucas. Thank you very much to the admin office for working on this as well, and do appreciate the conversation that we just had. And I will be meeting with Ms. Hutchinson and Mr. Lucas and getting back to you about what's going on.
Thank you very much.